One minute after ten we're going to open up our work session of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Please silence or shut off your cell phones at this time and join us in the conference.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, additions or deletions at this time? I know we have one addition remaining.
Correct, I have the building materials contract. Of course you can give us the details hopefully for consideration tomorrow.
The other on the board or anybody? With that, our very first item on the attendance to Pan Am Velgur. So we'll recess until we come back to Velgur with the prepare. But the press is allowed to go, cameras not. We will be in the audience while we prepare for this round.
Thank you.
Nice to see that they did let you out after the last couple of years.
Okay, we'll come back into session at fourteen minutes to ten. Paul, thank you for the jail tour. I'm sure you've documented everything that's necessary to ensure that we get through that. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office. We're really happy to have you here today. Thank you for your time. So, getting carried, we've got the area of the sheriff's office.
So, the attempt was to give a six percent increase compared to what's being, or they, or they added dues?
Six percent translates to three thousand three hundred dollars to here. But then we add on that overtime factor and then overtime, six percent. It roughly comes out to about that, over closing at sixty-five dollars.
Not sixty-five, too hot. Correct. Been offering.
Yeah, Jay and I are going to talk about what, how we make the budget, the budget basis of the numbers. I wanted to be high so that you could see maybe less than that, maybe.
Well, when I talk to the sheriff, um, for sort of now about this specifically, I'm curious about the timeframe to see if they're going to have the position built. Because there is a lot of value in field supervision, supervision here. Jay, is that true?
We, we went forward, we, we found a job. I know the sheriff doesn't have someone now, but I can describe how we got that to earn. So, the job that we follow, we take, you know, two parties and set up a panel and we decide. Sheriff's is very comfortable with the time and making that decision.
Great.
Took the audience on the camera to give us a quick synopsis of commissioner's sound test time. Right now, we have a sheriff and under sheriff, and then we have patrol. We have really nobody in between in the organization. And just give a little, uh, for the audience, a little tidbit on the, the benefit of this.
So, we've got administrative personnel in place. We do not have any mid-level or mid-line supervision. We have everyone that is essentially right now doing the patrol duties are all equal. And it's very important that you have that rank structure in place so that not only is there an administrative portion, but there's an individual there that can monitor day-to-day activities. And as they see efficiencies, they can correct those immediately. And then they can further on to administration to change policies potentially or find things that need to be addressed. And so, it's very important that that happens on a day-to-day level as opposed to administrator sees the big picture at the end of the day that we just got sued for something, but maybe something that, that, that first-line supervisor can see on the ground daily and say, this is a potential right there. We need to look at policy change, and then administrators can do that.
All right. We'll take action tomorrow. It's on our agenda for our regular board meeting tomorrow, Paul.
Right.
Any that'd be here for that or? My, I think if any of us have any questions, we can get ahold of you.
Yeah.
Now and then, and I know you've got a lot of things going on.
You've covered it with each of us, Hennepin, pretty well.
We're good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Jay, you've been waiting. Let's go ahead and jump down to you.
Okay.
Did you say quote, uh, business manager Jay? I know you've talked to each one of us a little bit, I believe. I had a chat with you this morning. Just, just give us an overview of what you're working on.
So, we go after quotes every year on, on these things. We can't really get quotes on the property liability portions of our insurance because there's nobody that can offer that to cities and counties. That's why city-county insurance was created. But we do get quotes on our health insurance, dental, workers' comp. So, the, the safe, you know, when we, we, we moved to C I S several years ago, and it's been good for us. Last year, though, safes rates have been coming down, and we were kind of at an equilibrium point last year. Now, we're, we're quite a bit lower for the, the safes premium. The good news is our experience modification factors improving. Based on our claims history, we, we went from one point one in two thousand thirteen to point eight eight now. The difference is with one point one, you're at a ten percent surcharge. With point eight eight, you're receiving a twelve percent discount, basically.
Jimmy, do you know what SAFE is? Could you?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the workers' comp insurance company, basically. So, in comparing the two, I want you to have all the information. You can stop me if I'm going too far, but one, one advantage of SAFE is that they have a lot of clients here in Lakeview, and so, they're here a lot, and they can provide more, more support for us. That's not always needed or sometimes even wanted, but, but, but when you need them, they're, they're able to give us what we need. I think the benefit of staying with city-county insurance would be that our health insurance and our workers' comp coverage is with the same company. So, if you ever have an employee who's injured and it's not clear whether it's an on-the-job injury or not, then rather than having two insurance companies fight about it, it's the same insurance company paying it and then figuring out how they deal with it. The only other factor, I think, is the part B of this coverage is employer liability. C I S's coverage is a three, three million dollar limit. SAFES is a two million dollar limit. Statutory requirement is only five hundred thousand, and it's, it's just, it's really a rare, it's a rarely used portion of the coverage. So, I don't see it as, as a big factor. Jim Hoppy is our agent for, you know, he's been in this business for forty years, and he has never seen it used, not one time. So, if, if we wanted to increase that, we could. It would be a small cost. In favor of SAFE, obviously, is the fourteen thousand dollar difference. Now, last night, city-county came back to me with a revised quote, which is a little bit disturbing, you know? But I come to find out, after talking with Dan yesterday, I realized, I didn't really understand how they were doing this. You know, we have our rates for each of those class codes, and they assign those rates based on a tier. So, there's not this one subjective level. This, they have these tiers, and then they apply your experience modification factor, and then they apply whatever discounts, you know, they, they choose to give you. You'll see that the difference in, in your handouts and your, in those quotes is about twenty-two thousand. SAFE is twenty-two thousand dollars cheaper, but we would lose about eight thousand of our multi-line discount on the property and liability side. So, that brings it down to about a fourteen thousand dollar savings. With the revised quote that city-county came back with last night, we're down to a little over ten thousand. So, still a significant number. I just think that they, they both provide good service. It's a little bit painful to change companies, but we've been with SAFE before, so I don't see that as a big problem. In fact, I think we need to, they need to know we're shopping both of these each year. Obviously, if we're getting a different quote once they find out, we, we've shot SAFE. So, my recommendation is to go with SAFE for this year and reevaluate every year.
So, Jay, given this new news on city-county in a new quote last night, the eight thousand increase for those, for the multi-premium discount.
Multi-line.
Yeah, multi-line. Are they going to come back in this next twenty-four hours?
Good question. Brad already asked me that question this morning.
Okay.
I was going to ask you, too. They can't. We, we have our quote from property like, property casualty, and, and we can sign that, and it's, it's in stone.
Okay.
The workers' comp is separate. They've already told us in writing what the difference would be on our property and liability. You know, the, what the difference, what we'll lose in the multi-line discount. It's right about eight thousand dollars, but, so, yeah, they can't do that.
Okay.
And the decision needs to be made tomorrow. Tomorrow's obviously the last day of the fiscal year. We have to sign that, that binder tomorrow. You don't have to, but we, I need a decision today.
Today is the last day of the fiscal year, so we actually, I think.
Today's the third. Today.
Welcome.
Sorry, that was an aha moment. Were you there? We've talked about that before. Yeah. A couple of weeks ago.
I saw it was on tomorrow, but I didn't.
Thursday's up, tuned all this time before Thursday's.
So, I need a decision today.
We're going to take that off the tomorrow's, yes, agenda, and then act on it today. So, what's that?
I'm going to make a motion, commissioner, that we follow the recommendation by our business human resources director of switching our workman's comp insurance from city-county to SAFE for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, as presented.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the recommendation to change from C I S to SAFE or through comp. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
So, from what we budgeted, it's about a fourteen thousand dollar savings. Most of that, of course, will be seen in the road department and the sheriff's department.
Do you have anything to sign?
Thank you very much, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
And I can sign it as long as.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Our agenda's getting smaller as we go along. Special transportation being that. Move you right on up.
Okay. So, special transportation, what's before you is the contracts for the upcoming by union for our providers. During budget time and during the contract time with ODOT, Public Transit, you approve the dollar amounts. These are just the actual contracts with each provider. Those providers being Lake County Senior Citizens Association, Intercourt Family, and Southern Oregon Goodwill. And this, just so that you are aware, this contract does include both state and federal funds. And it also includes what's required for the vehicles that they're utilizing, being the buses and the suburban, so.
Any other questions or any question with Denise in that?
No. I'm, I might abstain tomorrow on one of the contracts, but other than that.
Okay.
You want to give an explanation or just?
I'm going to leave the audience out there hanging. No, I, I've got a sister-in-law that's signing as the authorized rep, so I think I'll abstain from that.
On the special transportation side, I did meet with our rep and a couple of other representatives from ODOT last week, and we talked about the logos that are currently on those vehicles. Traditionally, they've been able to kind of do whatever they wanted to. Joanie wanted us to bring that together and have it called one name because it is our transportation that we are having other people facilitate for us. Her suggestion was Lake County Public Transit so that we got away from people thinking that it was just elderly and disabled. We need to be opening that up to the general public. So, by calling it public transit, we're inviting everybody in the county to ride, which is what we want to do.
We would still have the stipulation that have to have at least one disabled or senior.
That is always the goal. Per clarification from Joanie last week, it is always the goal to have one of, one or both of those on the bus. But if that is not the case, then you don't, not take the bus.
So, Denise, did you explain to me last week that others that would take the bus that don't fit to what historically we thought was the reasons for the program? There's just a donation requested? There's not an actual fee?
There's no fee, no. Not in, not on our side. We are not at four feet. Other places do that. When, when you transit, they have a set fee. We are a suggestive donation kind of a transport.
And for the audience that's watching, what is the possible destinations covered area?
At this time, our providers transport to Klamath from the south end of the county, sometimes Medford. Goodwill will take people even on excursions to Crowder Lake. They've gone on fitnicks to nearby lakes, that kind of stuff. They go to Alturas to the casino, so does Senior Center on the north end of the county. They go to Bend, Redmond area, primarily for doctors, appointments, medical, that kind of stuff, some shopping. They do go to the casino as well. They're, they're welcome to expand that however far that they want to, but primarily, that's their destinations.
But as far as they expanding it, do they need to brief you on it before they incorporate something for their destination?
No, they're very good at checking in, and they're very good at checking with Joanie to make sure that whatever travel they're planning is acceptable, but they are encouraged to do field trips. They are encouraged to, you know, during the casino festival.
The general public, if we didn't have anybody that was a senior.
We don't have public transit or even taxis in Lake County.
Or even what?
A taxi. There's no taxi here.
I picked up the H I.
ODOT, you don't count. ODOT does take that into consideration for rural counties for our program. That's why Joanie wanted us to expand the name to public transit and have that a little more heavily advertised. In our county, keeping in mind.
The, the typical person taxis, just for discussion, if you wanted to go to a casino and there's a taxi, you'd say you're going, but we're going to those kind of places.
It's for, it's for recreation. It's not limited to medical care. It's not.
Well, Denise, and you, you know, we've talked about this before. You, you aren't setting the rules or you're just running the program.
Correct.
And this is much bigger than today's discussion. Really struggle with where we're going with special transportation.
Joanie also recognizes in our county, the chances that we are going to have elderly or disabled on our bus is very high. Our, our elderly rate increases where our younger dynamic decreases, so.
And a lot of our seniors, the, that social interaction and recreation.
For sure.
Just for a little bit of clarification, you can't just go sit and go over there and say, public, I want to go to the casino today.
No.
Those are planned excursions.
Correct.
And it's not something.
Land and advertised.
Yeah. That's just one of the, one of many. And some of that is a positive for some of the people that can't get out of, out of the community.
That's true.
I just wanted to mention that where we're at today, the work you've done, working with Joanie, working with the state, and with our local providers, we've, you've leveraged so many more dollars. It's on the ground. Public transit is something that I've been asked about many times. People don't even realize that we have this here. I didn't realize it. And so, there's a lot of people that can get around now if they'll start using it the right way and everything. So, I think we've come a long way. I agree. Some of the things I struggled with, too, but.
Seniors, elderly, disabled. I have, and I applaud Denise as well to the point of almost saying you went beyond our expectations.
Joanie's been great. So, opening up the door for users. But the key point, it's already a program trip, it's not special.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. The program that I C F C runs out of Paisley is a call, they have to call three days ahead of time. She uses volunteer drivers rather than one of our special transportation vehicles. So, their program is a little bit different in what, in what service they provide. But they work very well. It's been perfect having the three providers that we have and the management that we have with those three providers because their communication just continues to grow and they continue to work closer together. And, you know, I C F C is doing a great job of helping the North Lake bus and the South Lake bus get full. And she takes the people that, they take the people that are those odd times that the bus isn't running. So, it is, it is starting to mesh much better. But for today's discussion, I just, on that logo, I just needed your, I guess, approval for having the buses and markings on the suburban state, Lake County Public Transit provided by, and that provider. We want to make sure that we're giving credit to that provider, but we also want everybody to know that it is Lake County's public transit.
I have ten cents, I'm very good with that.
Okay.
You're going to get magnetic signs for the.
For the suburban, we will?
No, I mean for the intercourse.
Oh, for intercourse.
Personal labs.
We sure can.
To identify that's what they're actually up to.
Mm-hmm. That would sure be nice, actually, so.
I think that's a good recommendation.
Super, okay.
All right, so we'll act on the actual contract tomorrow. You got consensus from all three of us on the logo. And Jennifer, your next addition, building inspector contract.
Kind of just realized that it expires, expires today.
So we might want to act on this today, is that what you're saying?
The building official contract. Now, the, we have two contracts, twenty thirteen zero six A is for inspections and plan review. That does not expire unless one party or the other chooses to expire that. Building official services, that does expire. But Greg and I are sending on to legal counsel, I've already sent to legal counsel, asking if we can change the verbiage, I guess, in section one one, the effective date and duration to match the same as the inspections and plan review, where it doesn't expire unless one or the other party chooses to expire that.
I, I believe that's probably fine, other than if there's going to be an increased cost yearly, then we'd have to do amendment to that. So it's, it's fine now when it continues on, but we're not going to accept just every year they're going to get raised.
Right, sure.
So if there could be a financial change.
Sure.
Needs to be in there, if there's any financial change, amendment will come before the board.
Okay.
So Greg had indicated this new year, we weren't talking about any increases.
No.
And this doesn't deal with, doesn't, Jennifer, because I know we've, I've visited with you and with him quite a bit about the other service that's being looked into by Klamath County to be able to insert that service into.
The public hearing officer.
Right.
Yeah. So that will have to be probably an agreement of its own.
Yep.
Or?
Well, as I told him, and I don't know, I mean, legal counsel can tell us sort of liaisons and negotiations, but it's like, it's a service as an as needed, just like our, if we changed or put another chapter in there that dealt with that and the rate that it would be when service is needed.
Okay.
So, anyway.
So also has to be decreed with by the commissioners of Klamath County.
And I think that's being discussed today.
Yeah.
So your work with legal counsel right now, get the verbiage changed in there? So if that happens before, or adjourned this afternoon, we could have you come back in with the clean copy. If legal counsel has it all in there and everything.
All right.
If you wanted to prove today, one day off from this contract here will be fine, Greg.
Yeah.
Greg will still do his.
Yeah, because the only thing is these two original copies came from Stephanie in Klamath County, and she's out sick today. So she's got the, the original word document of it. And, but I've been in contact with her at home, she's been at home checking her emails.
So it looks like Paulie bring that back tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
And Ted, for the record, staff, yes, the department head for the Klamath building department.
Yep.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, so we're waiting for Juvenile Department. We can go ahead and jump down to liaison updates. Who wants to jump out there with the short version of the liaison updates? Did I say short version?
You did.
Go ahead.
This afternoon, I'm scheduled to meet, so I won't be here for the one o'clock with some folks on our workforce, our new service area that is going into effect tomorrow along with some other state law. I can't remember what that is, that was passed in November, it's ironic, it's the same date. But our new workforce organization, we've got some, some hiccups in it. And then again, on Thursday, this will be in Klamath on Thursday, I'll, right now, tend to be in Bend. We're trying to work through some of the questions that, with the, the new funding, the new organization, et cetera. Next week, then, I, I think I, I talked to Denise about it yesterday. I may or may not be in all week. We have a Grand Sun playing and a new regard star tournament, but I may be off a couple of days, so.
Well, I hope you're off a couple of days, I hope they get through and win it.
Yeah.
Not that I'm on the aisle office or anything.
Is there anything we can do to throw the game?
There is, yeah.
Oh, well, you've been there, done that once.
It's gonna be nice and toasty, about a hundred and seven on Friday when they start, so.
See, pretty pickly water cooler ice.
No, lots of ice. This week, I'm going to be off on Thursday, I'm probably not going to be on, on Thursday. We've been having call-ins with the regional institutions and players on Red Rock. Those continue to happen, happened yesterday, which is off the, the Thursday time with the vacations and everything this week. Continued very optimistic on the Red Rock, they're going through processes from land use to their, their air quality permit has been approved, so that's going forward. Working with them on Catamis Road, gave out some options there if they wanted to possibly get that paved this year. Some options that the county could consider on reimbursement, don't believe that's going to happen, but options put out there. So Red Rock continues to work through the permitting process, they haven't got the community service fees and the track agreement, all that stuff finalized for us as a whole board to, to act on yet, they're, it's all in the process right now. So just an update, they continue, I'm very optimistic that they're moving forward, things are looking good. Next week, I will be in Bly on Friday, Executive Act, will be looking at the two thousand eighteen to twenty-one or twenty-stip, which just seems, you know, we, we work on things today for many years down the road. We'll also be getting an update as the executive board on Connect Oregon Six. And I'm not sure exactly what kind of funding or what kind of directions it will come down, but I know that our railroad operators will be applying again if everything comes together. On Wednesday, the eighth, the transportation system plans T S P locally here, the one for our road department, the Lakeview area and for Paisley, the town of Lakeview opted not to pay into their portion to be on this grant. It'll be going to the next level, we have, be meeting Darwin, the planner will be involved, the road department itself. So that's whenever we'll be trying to get anything in there in our transportation plan for the future as we want to try to leverage funds. As you guys know, one federal dollar is another one's come available. If it's not in your transportation plans, a lot of times they mark you down because of it's not a planned thing. So look at all the curve corrections that we possibly could consider on the county roads and sidewalks if necessary, things like that. So access, many different things. The pining site, it's important for pining site to be there for development, land use and those things. With that said, I, I go on and take Commissioner Kestner's thunder, if it's actually thunder, but I did, I have, since the sage grouse, the sage con group have worked so hard last few years, they've got to where that all of us have the documents now. I did attend the Harney County last Thursday, was it? Yeah, Thursday, Commissioner Kestner also did. We tuck all the proposed verbiage that's going to go on the O A R and on the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife site. And we critique that very hard as Harney County, Lake County, Maloja County, Brook County.
Grant.
Grant and Baker, I don't know if they were on the line or not. We had a productive work session and critiqued a lot of it. Continue to do that, Judge Grassi sent out some stuff, I know Mr. Kestner's been elaborating quite a bit of it. I'm trying to get through a lot of it too, but it's going to be big. It's one of those things, individually, I don't believe in our land being managed for one species. But if we're proactive and we try to set the guidelines for the sage grouse, then it might help for them not be enlisted in that. At times, it's hard to keep that upfront whenever I personally honestly disagree with some of the things that the state and the Department of Fish and Wildlife have in there. But the long run is, is to try to, try to help to keep them from being listed, so.
Or if they are listed, we can get a four D rule. Exactly. If they're listed, it's going to be devastating, especially to a farming ranch community, which is our base.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the four D because I'm still reading and trying to learn all that. But you probably have information, been with the federal agencies over the years. But it sounds like that's a very good thing, if that was in there, that gives some, some of local or state ability to address if they are listed. So that's enough, my liaison, I know you'll.
I'll expand just a little bit on the sage grouse. It ranges all the way from Dakotas to us here. East Rocky Mountains and that great basin. Over in that area, threats are usually ore gas, the plow, and the farming, et cetera. Over here is mostly wildfires and invasive species, sheep rats and others. I've been hoping that maybe people on the east side of Rockies get listed and we don't, but I'm not so sure anymore. If it does get listed over here, the four D rule is really, and it's not set enough in the sage con. That is really a underlying pin that if the grouse get listed, do we have enough? We can't manage the federal lands, but on private lands, what's the L C D O A Rs would address? Maybe we can get a four D rule. Four D rule is basically the US Fish and Wildlife saying state, we're going to list potentially, and you guys have a good program, we let you handle the endangered species in your jurisdiction, which is the Oregon. That, that has many benefits, again, if the grouse is listed, I'll back up with it, if the grouse is listed, and we don't get a four D, it's going to be devastating. People don't really understand the impact that the S A, when it comes to habitat. If we get a four D, then what we have in our L C D O A Rs and O D F W E Rs would be what we govern, how we manage, and only what's in there. If we don't have a four D, a lot more would come down on us. So, and I respect Judge Grassi, and he's been striving hard to maintain a balance on the economics. Fully supportive of that, it's just that we don't want to go too lenient because that would jeopardize us getting a four D. And that's what I want to guard against, is jeopardizing that four D if the sage grouse get listed.
So before Jake comes, your guys' discussions, those are all good, good information, good updates, but it made me think of a couple of other things.
Go for it.
Because I don't have my calendar in front of me, I just want to recognize Steve Brown, who we have in attendance today, his work with senior centers, we all know, senior centers may hit some tremendous game through the beneficial area some of their meal, lunchtime meal last Friday, but more importantly, just organizationally, the programs and the great deal of interest over there that's been generated in justification by our senior community. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I sent on to Andrea Wishrider, director, she's doing a great job.
Oh, it's, yes, and we, we've got Denise with special transportation, and in that discussion, we've got upcoming vehicles, so. That'll be nice when that happens.
Be great. I used to participate on Friday meals, but the past couple of years, my calendar just haven't let me. But is that new shelf you have still working there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we had a board meeting last night, and I guess the numbers continue to climb. So, unfortunately, we won't be able to keep him forever, but we're sure thankful to have him right now.
Yeah, he's setting a standard.
Yeah. Doing really well. So on the eighth, when I said I may be engaged in the Little Guys, if I'm here, I think we all got a phone call from Connie Cummings, the Fremont Wyneuma Forest suit the other day.
I did not.
Oh, if you weren't here, you would have got it. But anyway, just kind of an update on fire season, but in that, she called me back Friday evening. She was in Portland or somewhere, and we are trying to schedule, and her scheduler picked out the eighth, which may not work for me. But we're trying to schedule that day in the field to look at a variety of things, not just roads, but campground, signage, trails, just general, because I had that kind of tour out planned, and she's since that time invited Amanda to come. It was just meant to be a real low-key day out, but.
For record, expand on Amanda.
Amanda Warner Thorpe, the Fremont Wyneuma Forest engineer. We're going to look at, we're going to drive over the roads, we're not going to really talk about, just going to bump over them. But she also has oversight of the facilities program, et cetera. So anyway, that may or may not happen next week. And then just one quick note, just to all remind us all again later in the month, that I'll be over in Ashland at our National Wildland Fire Leadership Council meeting, we're going to be meeting over there. Two days in the field, all the agency heads are part of the with luck committee, from the chief of the forest service to the department interior directors, which will include, hopefully, Dean Nash, it includes him, but hopefully he'll make it, so. The twenty-seventh starts and finishes with that stage, Denise, I'm counting to the thirtieth. It's Monday through Thursday.
Yep, twenty-seventh through the thirtieth.
And this is a thing we're going to be doing ongoing. We've typically went to DC for our meetings with our new director of the COBC strategy, our national strategic committee director. He's out of Georgia. Mike Zucco is attempting to get quarterly meetings in the field so we can actually look at the progress being made and view the, an awful lot of the communication outreach, and we'll have the people who can make this happen from state to private to federal, in our case, the county, NACO, et cetera. And I'm really looking forward to it because you get a lot done in DC, but you don't get the things done that you need to. We're at that point where we need to be out amongst the people and the projects and seeing what the pitfalls are and helping our national strategic committee as they move forward with the communication outreach plan to be able to get the necessary support to make this become a real thing as far as land management and fire protection, so.
Very good. All right.
I've still got.
You still have something?
Checking my calendar a few minutes ago. This Thursday will be a holiday, beginning the fourth of July, this Friday, I mean.
Friday is, yes.
I was checking my calendar, if there's a person specific holiday on the following Monday. I'm turning seventeen years old. But I'll, I'll still be here though.
On that Monday.
Yes. So that makes for a four-day holiday.
Coming Monday?
So you multiply that times four and you add the four years, uncertainty, that's seventeen.
For, for, in March, that's a very juvenile date. Also, I was participating in a kind of a local group with ODOT at Summer Lake, trying to revisit the speed concerns going up there. And they've re, ODOT reined it that they cannot put, reduce speed, but we're looking at different options to psychologically slow people down as you come north, from the north into Summer Lake, where the story is, you've got all that vegetation in. It's kind of a really risky point there. And I've kind of chatted some with, if we put up signs like Bull Rock, Civil Aid, Christmas probably did through the Ford Foundation a couple of years ago, at least letting people know that there's a quasi- community ahead. Summer Lake being quasi-community, not the others. We're looking at different options there, so.
Can some of that vegetation be taken care of?
That was my first emphasis, yep. We're going to remade in August and, and look at what ODOT can do and what the community can do and go for some more. Also, when the pill pavement came to, there's a little deficit there of about a hundred thousand dollars that may be affecting the beginning for. thousand dollars, that may be a back in the beginning for fund balance, such as you talk with treasure, what options we have, if we need to address that, if we need to address it, we'd be right like tomorrow.
Well, it still was almost a hundred thousand dollars more than what we budgeted for.
Yeah, well, just go ahead and have a chat with your treasurer.
Well, the thirty-seven million shortfall nationally on that program will be paid after October one, which is the federal fiscal year, they will make those payments, so we will make up that hundred thousand each year, it's.
It's when they come in.
Yeah.
If they come into the federal fiscal calendar, whether it comes into higher fiscal calendar. That's all I got.
Okay.
Except, back on the sage grouse, there, this afternoon, as you may know, ODFW, Chip Bell's gonna give us, on the ODFW, OARs, but the LCD, land conservation development, they had their public hearing in Burns, mid-July sometime, I don't have it in front of me.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. And the ODFW commission, they had their public hearing in Salem the day before that, twenty-first.
Twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh.
That's all I got.
Okay, I wanted also say to Steve that whenever we done the wheels on wheels, the three of us here a couple of months ago, it was actually quite a bit of fun, enjoyed it, Andrea does a wonderful job, driver was full of energy, and it was pretty fun, it went fast.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that.
Well, it was, it was great.
Need to do it again.
Just, I know you stay in touch with the liaison with Dan, but.
I missed him even last night, I didn't even know.
Yeah, apologize, we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
We're really, really glad to see the direction you guys are working, so thank you very much.
Jake's on that board also, so.
We weren't, we weren't thinking, yeah. He's only been on the board just right around thirty days, you know, there's a, there's a six-month honeymoon period, then we have to reevaluate and discuss it then. Appreciate you trying to acknowledge him.
I think Mr. Brown's going to.
Yes, sorry, Jake.
He's gonna have brandy points, he mentioned my name, now he's took them all back.
Okay, so with that said, Jake, come on up here, the next one on our agenda.
Why, thank you, sir.
This is the juvenile detention IGA, Clamott County, and us, don't believe there's any changes, but go ahead.
There aren't any changes from our previous contracts, our senior IGA. The rate is still a hundred and ten dollars per day, we continue to rent two hundred and twenty beds, break that down into quarters, every ninety days, we're allotted fifty-five bed days, if we go over that, we pay out of pocket a little more. This year, we're right on target, we're not spending any more money on detention, it's, we're pulled instead, you do have one unit currently in detention.
So, leave it to Jake, this last day of this year, we're right on target, it's productive, spend any more money.
We're about to not spend any more money, because we're using our allotted bed days currently. The, our relationship with the Clamott County folks is just wonderful, Mr. Dan Golden, he's been a mentor to me in a lot of sorts, but nevertheless, we've had a great working relationship with Clamott.
I have no questions, legal counsel reviewed it, it was the same as last year.
Yeah.
More physical change.
His response, when I asked him if he'd review it, it looks pretty straightforward, I usually get that from Mr. Bailey. So, unable to take any questions, not to Steve, but definitely from you three.
We'll, we'll act on it tomorrow, Jake.
Okay, will I need to be there tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
It's just routine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't make the same decision.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, Jake. And just, I would like to re-invite you all to our treatment court, we won't have it this week, it'll be July tenth, we meet at nine o'clock in the morning downstairs in the juvenile conference room for staffings, and then at ten o'clock, we move upstairs for the court process, so you're all invited.
We won't have it this week?
We won't have it this week, Friday's a holiday.
Now, why did you tell me last week to be sure I was there?
It was last week.
No, you tried to say, you tried to pull the trigger down.
Thursday, I said twenty-sixth.
No, you said the third.
It's the second and fourth Fridays of every month.
As liaison should make it, but I'm in Bligh on the tenth, at Executive Act meeting, so I can make it.
Fourth, please, the second, or someone that can make it, I encourage you to do so, it's, it's the money that the criminal justice commission is giving to Lake County, and at the board's direction, I worked with the judge, Rob Nichols, as well as our district attorney, to create this program, so it's, this dollar's given to the county, they're working, working hard and working good, we've got some real successes right now, viscerally, on, we've been working since April, we've got some real successes right now, just hearing how many days they have clean, and most of these folks can't tell you, can't remember what they did yesterday except for used drugs, so it's a, it's a, it's a great program right now, we're, we're doing it with criminal justice commission to evaluate the program and to see where it goes, they're excited that we were, Lake County is the only county to take those monies and create a specialty court, most counties took that money and just kind of built on whatever they had going on, some hired work crew, which doesn't reduce the prison population, that's one of the main goals, so, I'd encourage you, when you have time, come partake in the festivities.
Thank you, sir.
You betcha.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, just a little bit more on department update, it's not necessarily just stressful.
Well, I, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was gonna ask the board, on department updates, we haven't had much participation, I'd like for Denise to send out again to encourage department heads to come give us updates. Before, I usually ran, or I guidance kept in at least twice, while I was liaison, while I was chair, to try a little bit different approach this time, just to encourage them to come give us updates, if Denise would send out an email, to encourage them to do, come before us. I really like the updates on trainings, different things that we're investing in, the positive things that our departments are doing. With that, you wanna give us a department?
I do, I just wanna let you know that next week, I'm gonna start my process for getting quotes for our vehicles that were approved during budget time, and I also wanted to give you an update on the copiers that were swapped around yesterday, the DA did receive their new copier, so that is now in place and functioning, the copier that was in the hallway now resides in the assessor's office as planned previously, they will be getting fax capabilities within the next couple of weeks, so.
Good.
Very good.
Yeah, getting everybody switched around on where they're gonna be printed to, so.
Well, and speaking, speaking of those things, just really quickly, I think most people probably saw that our heating cooling contractors here today, and an update from Dave was that, you know, they're, they're gonna move right ahead, get that done in our onsite, building contractor was also here, I don't know, beyond the painting, they've gotta put in the dropped ceilings in a few places in there where they were gonna be put in after the paint, and so I think we're moving forward with all of those things pretty well.
Good.
I got one other thing, I've been engaged with the, what's referred to as the community partnership endeavor, it's kind of like a downtown revitalization group, and they're gonna have a public meeting at the senior center next Wednesday, I think, six or seven, I don't have the time yet, but it'd be good to, if we get something moving here to kind of enhance the amenity values and economics, we can learn to take it out to other communities also.
Good. Steve, you wanna give any update on DOC out there, as we have you in front of us?
Sure.
Impromptu, just sort of, you've got the three of us?
We're pretty excited, we, we're in the process of firing seven new officers.
Did you say how in a firing?
Yeah, did you say?
Hiring. Officers, we also have a lieutenant that was promoted to a captain at Two Rivers in Umatilla, so, assuming if one of the three of you have it, you'll be getting a phone call to see if you'd be willing to sit on our panel to hire the next lieutenant, so we'd like, and I think Jake should be getting a phone call to see if he'd mind sitting on. It's important that lieutenant level, they're our first level supervisory managers, and we like to have someone that works well with our community partners, so, that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks, I would imagine, the thirteenth? Thirteenth, so, Brad, it'll probably be, it's gonna be you who they're gonna ask first, if they haven't yet. Our budget, Warner Creek is, are right on target, and doing well with this biennium coming to end today, and looking like we're gonna have a little bit of relief this next two years, I don't know if that means we're gonna get to do anything other than not have to cut vacancy savings, but we're hoping, I've been talking to the forest service and a couple of other people out, would love to get some inmate workers out, cutting juniper trees down, I talked to a PhD student about doing work out here on South Adel, that junipers aren't good for sage grouse habitat, we'd love to send inmates out there and cut all of them down, so, but I have to have the work to request the resources to take them out, so we're in the process of trying to develop some relationships there with Oregon State, Forest Service, PLM.
And the NRCS.
NRCS.
NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, they have the sage grouse initiative, that is doing, funding tremendous amount of juniper cutting, that's all the cutting that's on private lands.
Okay.
And I've got the contact person for you, I'll give it to you guys.
Thanks, Ken, okay, so, things are going well out there, we're, yeah, other than hot and dry, so thanks for asking, right?
Yeah.
My apologies for missing graduation the other week, I usually try to make those, but I was out of town that day. Good food, as always.
Okay, with that, we'll recess until one o'clock, at one o'clock, we'll come in on the seagull discussion with Chip Bell.